Good evening, Commissioners and anyone watching. I'm going to bring to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, and the time is 7:04. All who can, well, let me share my screen. I like doing this. Share. All who can, please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'll go on to the roll call. And if you're here, please indicate so when I call your name. Holly Ben?
Here.
David Blumey? Erin Levitt Smith? She's here. She's trying to connect the audio. Craig McCormack?
Here.
Alan Needham has resigned. Maybe if I can take him off the list. William Rice, present. Rich Cortez? Which is not with us at the moment, and Julie Eaton?
Julie's muted.
So, one, two, three, yep, Julie, I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to a regular member tonight without objection. Good. Thank you. So we have one, two, three, four, five Commissioners tonight. That is a quorum. Ready? Next.
Did you count, Erin?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, Laura doesn't get counted as a Commissioner.
Right.
Definitely a participant, but not a, not a.
Okay.
Uh, next. Minutes from the meeting on September 28th. Since we don't have a Secretary at the moment, someone want to volunteer to go through, lead us through it? Otherwise, I'm happy to do it.
Go ahead, Bill. They're sure.
Yeah. Alright, so yeah, only two pages, one and one and three quarters. First page, any comments on the first page, lines one through forty-nine?
I didn't see anything.
Nope. Nope. We hear you fine now, Erin.
I know, I'm sorry.
Julie, Julie, you're still not, uh, no, okay.
You want to give them the call in?
On page two, lines fifty to eighty-six.
Didn't see anything again.
No, I thought, I thought they were pretty good as well. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Craig makes the motion. Erin, that was you seconding?
Yes.
Erin seconded, okay. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Yeah.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, five, zero, zero. Beautiful. Okay. Next, we, uh, there are no new public hearings, no applications. Uh, but under new business, we do have a referral from the zoning commission concerning the text amendment for cannabis establishments moratorium. So the, the, uh, application along with the proposed text amendment was included with the packet. Did everybody get a chance to see that? Okay. Um, so let's see, Laura can, what, what type of referral? Oh, it's a text amendment. All text amendments are referred to the planning commission, right?
Correct.
And that's for consistency with the P O C D. Okay. So as I understand it, um, certain laws have gone into effect in the state of Connecticut um, regarding cannabis, and this text amendment, um, will create a one-year, how do we call it?
Pause, if you will.
Pause, yeah, a temporary and limited moratorium on any, uh, any cannabis activities. Now, I'm sure, I, the way I read it, it's clear that Cure Leaf can continue to do business as they are.
Correct. It's only for the recreational marijuana component.
Okay. Oh, so I'll open it up for comments. Anybody have any comments?
I think it's a good, that we take our time figuring out what we want to do.
Yeah, I agree. It seems very reasonable to give ourselves a time.
And, and how does, you know, how does that, um, kind of dovetail with the P O C D?
Can I say, did I miss something? Because I didn't understand that it was just for recreational, so I don't know.
Well, the medical marijuana component's already established within the zoning regulations.
Oh, okay.
That's why he identified the different establishments, the, and some of them do have the possibility to inter- intertwine, if you will, if we go with the recreational component. But this is just to to- totally pause the recreational to allow the zoning commission a little bit more time to, to think about this. These statutes just went into effect, and not all of them are totally complete at this point.
So, Bill, your question is, what in the P O C D, um, do we have to back up our opinion that a, a moratorium for a year would be good? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Because our, our P O C D has things about economic development, it has things about, um, you know, recreation, uh, improving people's, uh, lives, which by some accounts, um, you know, marijuana is, is advertised to, uh, to kind of meet those, meet those objectives.
Well, there is a section on how we want to grow, so.
Yeah, we wait.
Section nine point one B on page eighty-two, uh, they talk about enterprises just for economic development, that we, uh, under enterprises, Simsbury will maintain positive relationships with local businesses. So we don't want to rush into anything that might damage existing businesses, uh, retain existing businesses and support their growth and expansion, as well as support the startup of new enterprises. So I think this gives us time to think about what kind of enterprises we want to, to encourage, and, and which ones we might deem what activities may or should with the town. So that, that, that would be my justification, uh, nine point one under economic development. Uh, I think we can get in the weeds with the recreational part.
Very good, Holly.
How long have you been thinking about that one?
Only since you asked what was going to, when you guys started talking about it, I thought, well, I don't know if we're gonna go there, you know?
And, and to further cultivate Holly's point here, I think the, I think the, uh, in that paragraph A of, uh, section, uh, two point six, the, the memo that we got regarding the limited memorandum of, uh, moratorium on the cannabis establishments, that last sentence, you know, uh, this temporary limited, uh, term, uh, moratorium has been adopted to provide town with the time necessary to develop regulations. So it seems to me is all we're doing here is to give the town time to consider what, if any, regulations are necessary, okay? And, um, so that, when those regulations are developed, they are well thought, thought through and consistent with the P O C D, right, as Holly had just described. Um, you know, so I just think it's just a matter of wanting to have more time to consider that, right? So this, again, seems appropriate, uh, to allow the town to have the time to, to consider the, uh, the, uh, the way that these type of establishments may sync up with the plan of conservation development and support our economic development goals.
Such a great motion, Craig.
Okay. So I would, I would move that the, um,
Yeah, we hear you.
Planning Commission, are you really seriously ready for a, a motion?
Well, did Julie want to say something with, does that you?
Oh, sorry.
Couple of just clarifying questions. Um, one is more about how long we have known that this law was gonna go into effect on October 1st, and why are we waiting till October 12th to look for that moratorium? Right? I question why we didn't be a little bit more proactive. And secondarily, I'd like to know if our zoning regs, I haven't gone through it, but do they specifically call out like liquor establishments in the zoning? And if they do, then that, I could be more supportive. I just apologize, I didn't research any of the existing business regs in the zoning to see how they call them out specifically.
There are different rules pertaining to liquor stores. One is state licensures on the different locations in which they're allowed. We, we kind of classify ours more in which districts that they're allowed in, and it is a form of retail. So if there was no moratorium and the zoning commission chose not to act on this, they would go forward with whatever allowed in the state statutes, which would pretty much allow recreational marijuana in reti- in any place where you would allow retail. So, just as, I don't know if you guys got an opportunity to read the entire two hundred and sixty-nine page bill as it came through. But it took a while to, um, digest a lot of it. There was a lot in there. It wasn't just recreational marijuana. They actually included a, a bunch of different land use, uh, regulations and zoning regulation kind of changes. So they've had a, zoning commission has had a lot on their plate at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm not sure how a moratorium for anything, uh, is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So th- this is, you know, kind of a weird, a weird referral to me.
Uh, but don't, don't you think that the moratorium in its states to give them time to, uh, consider regulations is in line with us wanting to support enterprises? And if we don't consider it, if we just let the law pass, it, we could be dealing with a lot of unintended consequences.
Um, I, I think that's a barrier to entry. You know, if the state law is in effect, uh, you know, we should be developing, uh, our local businesses.
Well, um, I don't, you know, to Julie's point, maybe this will step on some toes of some, you know, I, I, I think it's worth being at and thinking about. I, I don't know, like, as Laura said, the zoning commission has a lot on their plate. I don't know how much consideration they're gonna be able to give this, but I personally would, would like to see this well thought out. This is, we're introducing, you know, uh, a, a substance that has some ability to, uh, cause distraction and, uh, uh, it's nice to think these things through.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I agree with you, Holly, a hundred percent, but I'm not sure the P O C D says anything about that.
No, it doesn't. I mean, does it say the word moratorium? I doubt if there's that word is in the whole book, but.
I, I, I think, I think.
A well thought out regulation is promoting good local enterprises.
Yeah, but that's not what it says.
Could you?
Well, I don't, no, I mean, it's not the Bible. I mean, I think we're allowed to interpret it.
No, I, you know, I.
Fundamentalist about this thing, you know?
I'm, I'm kind of thinking that we, we send, you know, a, a positive referral, um, the, and say it's the, uh, the text amendment's not inconsistent with the plan of conservation and development.
There you go. I was gonna say, Bill, I wonder if, if we had to pick something, there's something about net revenue, or, um, I'd have to look up the wording, but, um.
Yeah, I think we put that, I think we put that in the housing section.
No, actually, it was in nine point one. Yeah, I think it was right in, um, yeah, it says promote economic development in order to provide jobs, goods, services, and net tax revenue. So, I mean, that might be something, if we were looking for something in P O C D, does the moratorium give us a chance to take a look at this to see, is this gonna provide a net tax revenue? Um, you know, while promoting, you know, business, blah, 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 you know?
I know, I know for sure, you know, when we had that discussion, that was Alan's, um.
Yeah, it was.
Input, and it, it had to do with, uh, with developments. But, yeah, I can see where we could, uh, extrapolate it into, uh, other activities.
Um, with, with Erin's referencing, isn't that part that Alan put in? She, she was reading, uh, verbatim from nine point one on, on page two.
Right, but I think Bill's point is, and I think he's right, I think Alan initially had that term as it related to housing developments, but I think we broadened it because I said, you know, I think, should we be looking at other things with a net net? So I was just looking for, if we're looking for something in the P O C D, because I agree with you, Bill. I, while I agree, you know, we all agree, it would, it makes good sense to have a moratorium. It, you're right, how do you get the P O C D? It's really, there's nothing in there. So that's the only thing that I could point to was that next, net tax revenue, and certainly a moratorium in time would give us a chance to take a look at that to see if there was any, any value, so.
However, to Bill's point, a moratorium would prevent net tax revenue.
For a year, for a year it would, but do you, because what if, what if the enterprise, they decided had no benefit, then you might not move forward. So if the year, for that year, it would, but if you're looking long-term with the next, the, the net tax revenue, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Julie, what, what's your comment?
No, I would say, I think a year is a long time. I do think that there's gonna be a lot of new markets or new entries to the market tapping into that. We already have a grower in town. We have two CBD stores in town. There's something that is not feeling very equitable to me in allowing a one-year moratorium. Without anything specific in the P O C D that talks about the types of business we want to grow. Personal, you know, decisions aside, it's just a alternative point of view.
Yeah, it's a good one.
So could I ask, um, you know, a point that Julie made earlier, you know, about the, the timing of this, um, moratorium, uh, being offered, as, so maybe, maybe, uh, you know, a, a question to Laura. Um, why is the term of this moratorium, uh, a year? And why does it begin October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, to October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two?
So that's when they scheduled the public hearing for. They have to, to go forward, what, they have their own protocols on scheduling a moratorium. It had to have a public hearing. It had to be properly noticed. As far as it actually taking a year, I can of course not speak a hundred percent to it. I can tell you for sure, it is constantly on the agenda, and they have been tackling this. Um, they just want to allow themselves enough time because there are a lot of different consequences, and there are different factors that they have to think of. And I believe they say that there's six different types of establishments, six or eight.
Yeah.
Oh, even more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Different types of establishments, and to go through each of the different thirteen takes a little bit of time. As far as them putting it off, though, no, this is very top priority and high on their agenda. It also has a process in which it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, too. So there's a lot of different moving parts with this, since they want to allow themselves the entire year, because it doesn't just have to be approved by the zoning board, the zoning commission. It also would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
So how about if I make a motion like this? Um, so I move, uh, that the, uh, planning commission return a positive, a positive referral uh, to the application, um, citing no inconsistencies with the plan of, twenty seventeen Plan of Conservation and Development. However, the one-year moratorium seems, seems excessive uh, from the point of view of economic development.
You want to make a recommendation that it be something less than, if it's excessive, less than one year?
Yeah, you know, yeah, that's a good point. What would not be excessive?
I know.
And to what Laura just said, I mean, with all of the other factors that need to be considered here for something to be finalized here, you know, zoning and, you know, uh, the, um, Board of Selectmen approval and so on, maybe a year isn't all that excessive after all. I don't know. I really don't know.
Well, that's why I, I kind of, you know, put it in the context of economic development. And they, they could just adopt, I, I don't know, some very, uh, easy, easy to abide by regulations and people could start selling, you know, soon, and that would increase the, um, economic development in town. You know, this, this is not a zero-sum game, right? Th- this is not gonna take away from any other business in town, I don't think. So, uh, Laura, did you get my motion?
I believe so. I also have a recording.
Okay, okay. So Craig, I, 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 I'm gonna stand by my motion. I appreciate your comment. Uh, I don't know what a better time would be. Other than a year, it sounds too much.
Okay, so Bill, would it, would it be possible, rather than saying, would it be possible to amend your, your motion to, to add language that says something to the effect of, um, you know, with a recommendation that the moratorium be lifted sooner than a year if, if all, um, necessary considerations are given, uh, prior to October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two? I, I don't know, just so we can allow for it to be lifted earlier, should there be, you know, the review be complete and a determination made that it's okay to enact this, uh, this, uh, these rules in, in town?
Sure. Is everybody good, good with that?
I think it's, I don't know if you can lift your moratoriums earlier, Laura. Is that possible?
I believe they can.
Okay.
Because I believe, if I remember correctly, I think he said a moratorium. I believe they can. I, I'm a, I'm not a hundred.
Remember, you know, the, the other thing is, the, the zoning commission may decide not to allow the activity. You know, it'd probably get taken to court, but, uh, you know, um, it, it's not just like it's a year and then everybody, you know, opens up their doors. And, you know, we don't know what the regulations are gonna be.
So, my guess is it's gonna be kind of like regulating liquor sales, right? At certain hours, certain days, you know, who can be a customer, you know, age limitations, that kind of thing. But they've got to have some parameters that they're gonna establish, right?
And in all fairness, too, with the zoning commission, they're also waiting for some state guidance as far, some of the states even applications in order to apply for some of these licenses aren't created yet. So people, so they're looking for documents that don't exist. They reference them in the statutes, and the documents haven't been created.
You know, our, our P O C D promotes economic development. Our P O C D doesn't have much that says, you know, what should not happen. It's, it's a very positive document. It says what shall happen, or what, what, what should be considered. Yeah, you know, Craig, I'd like the idea of, uh, maybe tacking onto my, uh, my motion, that, you know, your comment that, uh, if, uh, you know, I, I can't even summarize it, but I.
So that the recommendation for the moratorium be lifted prior to a year of proper consideration?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the gist of it? I just want to.
All possible, right. Should all necessary consideration be completed prior to the end of the one-year term? Or one-year, you know, moratorium?
Period.
Good. Okay, uh, so my motion has been amended. Uh, is there a second?
Second? Oh, Holly, go ahead.
Okay, so Holly? Bill, motion? Holly, second. Any, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the, uh, the motion to re- return a positive referral with the aforementioned text? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously, five, zero, zero. Thank you very much. Yeah, I don't know, I, yeah, I'm not sure if we'll have another bite at this apple, you know, as far as the subject of cannabis sales. And I believe that's more of a zoning thing than, than a planning thing. So, see what happens. Okay, um, under old business, we have been, uh, discussing potential improvements to our plan of conservation and development. In our last meeting, I think we all concluded that we'd like to get some input from, uh, an expert, try to understand what other towns may be, uh, doing to address the, the term town character or character by itself, and, uh, we asked Mike if he could reach out to, uh, to Glenn uh, and get any input. So Laura, did Mike give you any, uh, input on that?
He did reach out to Glenn. He is waiting to hear back from him.
Okay. So let's keep that on the agenda for next time as well, please.
Yes.
Um, Bill, um, uh, I wanted to, um, make an observation, um, that, uh, came to me after our meeting when I was looking at the P O C D. Oh, when we talk about revising our document, we were looking, uh, exclusively at our wording, and we had, uh, some disagreements ourselves as to the need to change the wording, uh, because it, it was well, uh, defined. However, uh, when you look at our document, one thing that stands out to me, because this was finished in two thousand seventeen, is, uh, one of the things that helps set the tone and the feel of the document, of course, are all the pictures that we chose, and we did a good job. I think we were very careful in choosing pictures. However, in the meantime, uh, there has been a development in town that would certainly have warranted us wanting to possibly include a picture of that in, in, uh, some of our main sections, at least in one of our main sections, uh, that might be more inclusive for people. So, uh, in the last two years, the Simsbury, uh, High School finalized, uh, the, uh, funding and implementation of a, uh, of, of, of a memorial to Martin Luther King's time here in Simsbury, that is very beautiful, and it's in Simsbury Center. And so I just wanted to pass on that I saw a couple of different opportunities where we could drop that picture in, uh, to, uh, without having to redo the whole document. I just wanted for the council's consideration to bring up that point.
Okay, yeah, but that's.
Specifically, the first opportunity I saw, again, without having to reword everything, was on page five, when we talked about how we want to and, uh, throw the sense of place. We show a picture of Simsbury Center showing, um, you know, Hall, which is wonderful. Uh, we could show for Simsbury Center, we could show our Martin Luther King, uh, 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 memorial. We also have that same opportunity, and again, another thing showing Simsbury Center, it isn't really pointing at anything particular in Simsbury Center on page fifty-five. So it's page five and page fifty-five. Where, again, just fitting into what we meant to say and illustrate about our town, we could update, uh, and modernize with, with something that we, as a town, feel very proud about. I, I think it's something we all want to kind of blow our horn about, but the horn wasn't finished when we hit a P, P O C D. So I just want to submit that.
Well, that's a good one, Holly. Thank you. So when we, uh, continue our discussion, be sure to bring that up again, okay?
Okay. Well, I don't know if we can put that in the minute meetings just to say, just to throw that out there, or is that something we're not allowed to do?
No, there, I think the minutes can reflect your comments, sure.
I also think we have pride flags. You know, you, you could take a picture of some of the things that we've done around the, the pride and the, uh, diversity and, um, you know, things like that. I, I will say this, I, I agree with you, Holly. I think that would be great to up, upgrade. But I don't think putting pictures in substitute for making more inclusive and language that makes people feel uncomfortable. So I still advocate that we need to really take a look. So I still advocate that we need to really take a look at the wording. I don't think pictures is enough to address, um, some of the feedback that we got. But I think it's a great idea because we didn't have that option. You're absolutely right. And if you're updating, you might as well. I, I, I think those are, you know, it's a good suggestion.
Right. And, and Erin, uh, I will agree to disagree with you about wording. I, I, I've read it so many times. That's why I noticed the pictures. And I, I read it many times to say, how could anyone not understand this? So, uh, and then I said, well, wow, did you just looking through, which all reading studies show that people look at pictures before they read. Uh, I thought, well, it didn't look too inclu-, it didn't look as inclusive as it could be. But, um, that I'll, I'll leave the word to further discussions with a consultant.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I do think, you know, it's, it, I, I will tell you, I mean, this happens all the time, right? You, you send, you, you write something and it's not what you intend. And then you're like, how could they have misinterpreted that? Well, they can, because everyone looks at it through their own lens and their own life experience. And so I think for us, you know, I know what our intent was, but I, I really have thought about it. And I do get how people would, could read that with a different lens and feel something different than what we did, despite all the work we did to be careful. And it, it's not, I, I don't take this as a hit on us. We did a lot of really good work with the P O C D.
And, and I don't either.
A vast improvement, a vast improvement. But now, again, we're five years later and things are changing so fast that, you know, to hear that feedback and that just, just take a look at it. It's, I think sometimes it's hard. We have our own, we know what the intent was, but other people read it and other people use it. So it's just, you know.
There are different opinions and again, I, I will agree to disagree. Um, I, we represent our town and, and, and that's what I'm always in mind of. I am also very philosophically opposed to censorship for the sake of censorship.
Yeah, I don't see the censorship.
I think that's why we decided to let a consultant help us on.
Absolutely. I think that is the way to go. Yeah. So hopefully Glenn, I don't, I don't know if Michael, if he doesn't hear from Glenn to give another call to nudge. I, I don't know when he reached out.
I'll drop him a note too. I'm sure Laura will mention it, but I'll, I'll talk to Mike.
All right, great. He did bring it up to me today that he had been in touch with him. I just don't believe they've been able to, to connect fully, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can't expect Glenn to be at our beck and call, you know? We had him under contract for a while or a few years ago. That was, that was pretty good.
We know where he lives.
Oh, yeah, we could show up. No, it's.
You guys, we don't want to use those tactics.
No, you know, he cares about.
He's a busy man. He's, he was great to work with. He was great to work with.
Um, one other thing I do want to bring up, um, is the fact that, uh, when Alan resigned his position, I also took within the secretary role or opened up the secretary role. And I would like to, uh, I looked at our bylaws and for the election of officials, we need to notice the, uh, the election for two, two meetings prior to the election. Okay, so Laura, if you could, uh, reflect in the minutes that, um, I'd like to have election of officers, um, noticed on both, uh, let me see, what's our next meeting? Uh, 10:26 and 11:09? With a potential, uh, vote on 11:23.
Hey Bill, just one question. Um, would it make any sense? I mean, I agree that it's great to have a appointed or elected, uh, uh, secretary for our commission. I just wonder whether it would make any sense, uh, to, to continue with, you know, that temporary assignment until such time as the election cycle is completed that's coming up in November. And then once we have our, uh, elected slate of commissioners going forward, kind of have the election then to give those, whoever's elected to the board for going forward, to have an opportunity to kind of weigh in on who our secretary should be? Or should we just establish it now and just let it rip? I, you know, I just, just a question.
I, I thought about that too, Craig, and, and, uh, I, I'd like to have the election. Uh, I probably should have tried to, uh, have the notices, uh, a couple, you know, as soon as Alan told me he was leaving. Um, but I'd like to have the position filled now, even if we vote on 11:23. I think the new members are, uh, come on board in December, right?
Correct. It would be that first meeting in December.
We, we, we can, uh, establish elections of officials again right then, that, that wouldn't bother me at all.
Okay.
Now, um, the, um.
So you'd have a secretary for potentially one meeting?
Yeah.
Does that?
Well, no, it would be like three meetings because we'd have to notice twice again.
Oh, oh, really?
Yeah.
Possible. We don't have to have, as a commission, we don't have the election until the new commissioners are seated, right, Bill? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 we can have an election at any time.
Right.
So you'd reelect.
Well, it has to have two, 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 uh, meetings notice, uh, before the, uh, election can occur. So, um, you know, if we wait until.
But you've noticed it last meeting, Bill. You mentioned this before, so I just assumed this meeting was the first.
Yeah, well, yeah, we didn't get it on the, uh, agenda, so.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
It does make sense to wait. You know, Craig, Craig has a point. If, if it's only for three meetings.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a, um, objection to it. Uh, do you think, do you think, do you think that one of the new members would like to be the secretary?
We're hoping.
Or for the people up.
There might only be one new member.
Right, but it might be somebody who's up for reelection, right? So Craig and David are both on the ballot right now.
Yeah.
Right.
So if there are two candidates, then I think we should wait and make sure that, you know, they continue.
I agree. I, I, I was thinking the same thing, Craig.
You know, so it takes a long time to become familiar with those minutes, by the way. So a new person's not going to want to do it.
Well, that's what I mean. So the, the, the pool of likely candidates, besides David Blumey, I think are on the call tonight.
But we don't know that for a fact.
We don't know that.
Somebody who's really into Robert.
I thought, I thought everyone would be, you know, uh, writing up their nomination letters and, uh, you know, and there was going to be a runoff.
And.
Runoff. Oh, let's do that. Let's, yeah.
Now, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll hold off until later, okay?
I've already got my, uh, meet the candidates, uh, speech set for secret, my secretarial, uh, run here, so.
But I, I will, uh, as, as a concession, ask that, uh, uh, you know, we rotate through the commission to read the minutes until we have a formal secretary.
So Bill, can I, can I make a proposal then? So that first meeting in December would be the new board? And I think then to have election or whatever to do it then, so whatever that first meeting in December is.
So, okay, so we're going to have new members on the board and we're going to have an election that night.
Oh, 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 I see. You're saying wait until the new year and get them kind of on board in December. Oh, okay. And then have those of us, okay, all right.
See, now, now, now it's six or eight weeks, you know.
Yeah, so have us rotate. Yeah. You just appoint somebody each week to do the, the minutes and stuff like that. I think that's fair.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. I'm not a hundred percent happy with that, okay? I'm not a hundred, I, I, I'm remiss in not having this put on the agenda earlier. Uh, but anyway, we, we, we'll work with it. Uh, I brought this up in the context of the secretary's absence. Um, when we call for an election, uh, all officer positions are, uh, up for grabs. Uh, if someone else would, would like to be considered for the chairmanship, um, I won't fight you, okay? But I also, I have no objection in remaining the chairman. Okay, so, uh, please don't blind, blindside me when we, uh, when we finally have the election, where I think it's just going to be to elect the sec-, elect the secretary. And then somebody comes in and Holly nominates Aaron as, uh, chairman and then we have to have a vote. I'm saying it a little bit in jest, but I've seen it happen.
No, we, you, there should be, somebody should let you know.
Like toward each other, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, uh, uh.
I won't do that, though, by the way.
I know.
So you know.
So Laura, I, I believe the election is for all officials, uh, right?
That's right.
So it, it's.
Don't know what your rules of procedure state as far as how often, but they normally schedule on it either an annual or biannual election of officers.
Yeah, we don't have a, a time. It says the election, the, the commission shall elect a chairman and a secretary from its regular members to serve at the pleasure of the commission. The affirmative vote of at least four members shall be required to elect a chairman and a secretary. At each meeting at which the chairman is not present, the secretary will serve as acting chairman. In the event the secretary is not present, the commission shall elect from its members an acting chairman for the meeting by a majority vote of those present. Uh, and then.
Just what we did, yeah.
The elec-, the election of, of officers shall be noticed in two successive agendas prior to the election. Now, I know that we have actually run elections on the second agenda. You know, I mean, on the, the second notice. Um, but I guess it's kind of a moot point. We, we can, we can contend with that after the new members join the commission. So I, in my, in my, in my, uh, scenario, it would take three meetings to get to the, uh, election. But in other times, we've kind of interpreted the, 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 the second meeting notice
As the.
As the election.
Yeah.
So either way, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to make it seem like we're railroading. Uh, I have also seen that during election years where, uh, some commissions will shuffle the deck right before the election to try to, uh, I don't know, gain power. Um, haven't seen it in a while, but, uh, I know, I know it goes on. Okay, so anyway, yeah, um, the, the, the intent is to elect a secretary, but if the commission would also like to reelect or, or, um, elect a new, a new chairman, that, that would, that'd be fine. Okay, do we have any, uh, correspondence or anything, Laura? No?
No, no applications, no correspondence.
Yeah, after a banner year, 19 and 20, you know, 21's been kind of a bust for, uh, subdivisions.
Yeah.
Except for the Big Metalwood resubdivision.
Huge.
Yeah, but they.
There's a celebration this weekend.
Yeah, uh, did I hear that we had to take one of the barns down?
Yeah.
On, on Firetown?
Oh, on Firetown? Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know. Does anybody know where the celebration actually is? Like where on the property? Do we know that?
I don't remember.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
Probably look it up quick.
So the, I, obviously for structural reasons it had to come down?
Yeah. Ribbon cutting. Please join us on Thursday. Oh, sorry, that's something else.
There's a ribbon cutting, huh?
That's where, uh, Tower Ridge Disc Golf.
Oh.
Hey Laura, my bill is looking. Do you happen to know whether that barn was, uh, taken down? You said it was because of structural issues, right? So do you know the other two barns are, ha- have similar structural, um, weaknesses? Or are they deemed to be, um, structurally sound at this point?
As of right now, they have not been deemed to have the same kind of weaknesses as the other one. All things are subject to change, of course. I do know that the building officials are responsible for it and they do check the barns periodically.
Good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so do you see my screen? Am I sharing?
Yes.
You don't see the flag? Okay, so here's Hoskins. So, okay, here's the ribbon cutting. Um, Newberry Court. And the other, the other barns, you know, are to the right here. So everybody see, it's not on Firetown, it's on Hoskins.
170 Hoskins.
170 Hoskins.
All right.
Huh, parking entrance, parking exit.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So you build.
Oh, parking location accessible from the farm road at 170 Hoskins. Oh.
Right there. Yeah, so coming in past the, uh, the flag there and then turning to the left into the parking.
Oh, all right.
Going to park over here?
Yeah, yep.
Oh, not in the field.
Not, uh, not the soil field.
No, that's right.
Newly cut.
That's, that's all fixed up now.
Looks good.
It does.
Okay, so that's 170 Hoskins and that is when?
I think Saturday at 10:30?
Saturday at 10:30, exactly. Very nice. Good. Hope to see you there.
Yep, I'll be there.
Okay, that's all I had, folks. Anybody else? All good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I should tell you.
Oh, Holly mo-, made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Julie seconds the motion to adjourn. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously five, zero, zero, and the meeting is adjourned.